I call the Tuesday, February 13th, 2018 Work Section Agenda. A work section, that is, of the Portsmouth City Council's order. And Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Clark?
Here.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Here.
Mr. Moody?
Here.
Ms. Simmons?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Dr. Whitaker?
Present.
Mayor Rowe?
Here. And the first item of business?
Thank you. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of City Council. This evening, our first presentation is the Portsmouth Public Schools FY '18 Second Quarter Financial Report, given by Mrs. Brittany Doach, Chief Financial Officer, followed by Mrs. Barbara Dameron, interim Chief Financial Officer, giving the Second Quarter Financial Report for the city's general fund. The third presentation is a recap of the accomplishments of the City Council's 2017 Four Big Things, and a brief review of the City Council's 2018 Four Big Things formulated at the February 2nd City Council Retreat. A full report of the retreat outcomes will be forthcoming and made available on the city's website by the end of next week. Mrs. Doach?
And as she comes to the podium, I'd like to recognize Dr. Bracy, our School Superintendent. Sir, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Rowe, Vice Mayor Simmons, Council Members, Dr. Patton. It is my pleasure to present the December 2017 Monthly Financial Report for Portsmouth Public Schools. The full report was submitted to the City Clerk on January 26. This report provides a fiscal year-to-date look at revenues and expenditures. The amounts are reported on a cash basis, therefore revenue and expenditure amounts are based on actual cash received and actual cash paid at the end of December 2017 across all of the school board's five funds. So the school system funds include the general fund, which is the main operating fund, and this accounts for the day-to-day operations of the school system. The risk management fund, which is an internal service fund, accounts for all self-insurance, health plan expenses, insurance premiums, and workers' compensation claims. The grants fund includes state, federal, and other grant funding that is used for specified purposes. Some examples would be the Title I and Title II grants, which are from the federal government. The cafeteria fund is the enterprise fund, and that accounts for our food services operations. And finally, we have the textbook fund. So starting with our largest fund, the general fund, the current revised budget as of December is $147.7 million. Revenue received as of December totaled $70.1 million. A breakdown of the revenues include $32.6 million in state funding, $26.2 million in local funding, $6.5 million in state sales tax revenue, $132,000 in federal funds, $1.2 million of other funds, and some examples would include Medicaid reimbursements and indirect costs from our grant programs, and $3.4 million of fiscal year '17 funds, which were re-appropriated by the City Council into fiscal year '18. General fund expenditures paid as of December 2017 totaled $62.2 million. A breakdown by category would include $45.3 million of instruction expenditures, $3.5 million for administration, attendance, and health services, $2.6 million for pupil transportation costs, $6.8 million for operations and maintenance, $1.5 million for fund transfers, and $2.6 million for technology. The burn rate, which compares expenditures paid to the total current revised budget, was 42.12 percent. This has increased as compared to the December 2016 burn rate of 40.59 percent. Additionally, at the end of December, encumbrances equal $2.3 million. Now for a look at the other school board funds. The grants fund received $3.9 million in revenue, and grant expenditures totaled $8.3 million. Now, grant expenditures are incurred and paid prior to revenue being received or reimbursement, so any difference between expenditures and revenue would be the accounts receivable at the end of December. The risk management, revenues totaled $8.1 million; expenditures totaled $10 million. The fund balance reserve in this fund as of December was $3.4 million.
How much?
$3.4 million. Textbook fund revenues totaled $753,000; expenditures totaled $188,000. And lastly, the cafeteria fund's revenues totaled $2 million; expenditures paid totaled $3 million. The cafeteria's fund, largest revenue source is the federal government, and similar to grants, expenditures are incurred and paid beforehand before reimbursement is received. That concludes the presentation of Portsmouth Public Schools' December 2017 financial report. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Dr. Bracy, would you like to make any comments?
Thank you.
Okay. Mrs. Dameron? With the Second Quarter Financial Report for the city.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of City Council, we've distributed a two-page quarterly update report through December 31st, 2017, which represents 50 percent of the year that has lapsed. This report is shown on a cash basis, and we compare major categories of revenue and expenses to the same point in time from previous years and to budget. The front page of the report is the general fund, and the backside includes all major funds. Oops, went too fast. Excuse me. This slide shows revenue and expenses year-to-date through December 31st for the general fund, the utility fund, and the waste management fund. The fiscal 2018 budget results for the second quarter, general fund revenues and expenditures are overall in line with budget as compared to previous year's trends. However, there are a couple variances that I'm going to speak to on the next slide. Major funds are also tracking in line with budget, with the exception of revenues and utilities is tracking about $800,000 below fiscal 2017 due to the Chesapeake Water Contract revision. Expenses in utilities are trending slightly higher due to contractual services. Expenses in waste management are slightly higher due to the $3 million encumbrance for the SIPSA disposal fees. There are a few variances that I'd like to speak to in the general fund. For revenue, the investment earnings are higher than budget, and they will continue to trend that way throughout the remainder of the year. At this point in time, we're anticipating about $298,000. The VDOT revenue is slightly less than budget as the number of lane miles and the mix of lane miles have changed last year after VDOT conducted a statewide audit, and this amount of $152,000 will remain constant through the remainder of the year. Ambulance revenue is lower than budget. There are a few reasons for this, that include the timing of the bills, as well as using a slightly more conservative rate. This may improve as we continue to work on the processes, and I will share that I met with the fire department, and I am very impressed with the progress that they're making with the vendor that does the billing for us. And so I would look for this to improve some as we proceed for it with those initiatives. In terms of expenditures, the fire department is expending, we anticipate, about another $700,000 to $800,000 by the end of the year will be needed to cover their overtime. I just want to remind you that earlier in the year, $480,000 was transferred from their salary account to their overtime account to cover that, but we think another $700,000 to $800,000 will be needed between now and the end of the year.
Okay, Mayor, if I may. There are two primary reasons for the overage in the fire department's overtime. First, as we discussed yesterday, the city made a significant salary adjustment for positions in the fire department and the police department to make them competitive with surrounding areas. The increases that we are seeing is reflected in the FY '18 budget for salaries, but overtime was not adjusted for the increase in the salaries. When we looked at the number of hours compared to '17 and '18, they are not much out of line, but the increase in all of the salaries going up, which we did not capture in our overtime amount, is the reason for this. And we have spoken about this before, but now we have figured it out as to why.
She has.
Well, no. She kind of answered. Yes, yes.
Vice Mayor.
Because we have the 20-some that have or are coming on board and is that going to help that number going forward?
Yes. I have a new fire academy class started on November 20th with 20 trainees that will graduate this spring. That's going to help it. In addition, we have about 13 firefighters who have come on board who did not have to go to the academy because they are coming and they're leaving.
Already trained.
And they're already in training, so this definitely will help it.
So we won't need so much overtime?
As we move forward, it will decrease.
Yes, sir.
What will be the budgetary impact of hiring those new persons? How much?
Well, those are vacant, those are positions that are vacant, so they're coming in to fill vacant positions. I don't know that exactly, but I can tell you what it will cost for them who are coming on, but that's money already there.
Okay. And the $700,000 to $800,000, I understand you said that's an additional amount?
An additional over, for the total for the year, that they'll come in overtime will be about $1.3 million.
So the transfers that were made, I believe there were two transfers. One was made earlier this year.
One. That was 423.
And that was a 480.
And this is estimated as we go out to the end of the year.
Bill.
You said on the overtime that the largest percentage of that is the increase in salaries?
That is the, that is.
Would the hours worked in overtime the same?
About the same, yeah. But we, as we talked about last night in our public safety, some of those, and Mrs. Gooden spoke to that, some of those salary ranges went anywhere from 8 percent increase to 10 percent increase. We did not capture that in our part-time budget.
Also, on the ambulance billing, I know we increased the fee last year. What has that done to the delinquent?
I think that the delinquency is just trending, I don't, I think what you have is a timing difference between the time the bills are going out and being collected comparative to previous years. And in addition, looking back through our history, we had to adjust our collection rate. We were not, our write-off rate was not as high as it should have been, and that is comparing not only to our actual, but to industry standards. And so we're having to write off more and absorb some of what previously should have been written off. So you're seeing that impact as we go through this current year. And I think a combination of, there are also some small issues such as getting, following up on insurance codes when they come back with a question from the insurance providers, or making sure that they get signatures. And so they've been working very closely with our vendor, EMSMC, that is the vendor that actually does the billing, to close the gap on some of that, and they made quite very good progress on that. So I would look for us to be in line with what you see the standard collection rate to be, but is a little bit lower than what we were previously recording, so you see that impact here, too.
What percentage are we writing off annually?
Can I get back with you off the top of my head? It seems pretty high, we'll tell you that, but it is in line with industry standards. And the reason for that is you get, when you, you get most of your collections from insurance and from Medicare. There's a portion of the outstanding amount that is going to be connected to people who are, say, on social security or something, and even though you may go through all the steps to collect on that, when you get to the end of the day, there's a certain amount that you can't, you can't pursue collection efforts on.
Under time frame, we'll respond to this.
Let me make sure I'm clear, because last night at the presentation, there was a discussion about increasing the salaries so that it would take care of the internal equity issue. Are you saying that that's being captured in this overtime figure?
All right. What happened with the overtime figure here? Last year, when the increases occurred in the fire department, that was captured in the salary line item, but not in the overtime line item. And so that, as they continue to use overtime, that created a disparity in this year's budget. Does that answer your question?
I was just curious why, if it was to correct the internal equity, why that would not have been captured with the vacant positions?
I can investigate that, but since I wasn't here during that budget time, I really can't answer that question.
I was just curious why it's being categorized as overtime versus those were just.
Oh, no, this is overtime.
It is overtime.
It is.
There are two line items, and one accounts for salary at the normal hours for firefighters, but then there is some overtime that is occurring. I think it has to do with Kelly Days that they're being paid for currently, as well as when people are calling sick or whatever, and they have to hold somebody over.
I thought I understood you to say that the internal equity issue was addressed also within that overtime amount.
No.
It was.
It was not.
When the budget was set for this year, the overtime was not adjusted to reflect the increase in salaries, although the salary line was, the overtime line did not take that into account. So is there incurring the overtime this year that's causing them to go over? It will be taken account in the new, in the '19 budget cycle.
And I still have a concern that we are being presented budget for the fire department, police, particularly the fire with the overtime issue, and we have yet, we have yet to had any type of staffing modeling done to suggest what level of staffing it really needs to be. It's been just what someone has said it should be versus.
I actually think, and I will defer to Dr. Patton, but in my conversations with the fire department, I think they have a very good grasp on what their levels need to be, and that might be something to address at a later date. That would not be my area of expertise, other than.
But I'm just saying, from, we have to pass a budget, and just saying they have a good grasp of it, but we haven't had any type of external analysis, objective, that this is exactly what we need staffing-wise. I don't think we should just be staffing off of the cuff. It should be some type.
I don't think they're doing it off of the cuff.
I think they have a good understanding.
That may be another.
I'm recognizing you.
Yes, I would say, Mayor and members of council, the complements which are established for our public safety officers are in line with what the needs are for the population served. And our HR department is working with Dr. Morris, who is establishing and looking at public safety. And at this point, the complements that we have, the 262 and the 200, and I think it's 40 for fire, meet the needs of what.
Now, they asked for the floor, a number of recognized names.
Yeah, you know, to me, I think it's, just to do simple math, as far as the overtime issue, it goes back to the vacancies that there is light at the end of the tunnel because we have these new hires that are in the academy now. Basically, just to use simple math numbers, is last night, Ms. Gooden gave us a presentation, salaries were increased on an average of 8 percent last July. So in theory, if we had the same numbers of overtime since July, it would have increased 8 percent in the cost, so that's.
Exactly. Exactly. Couple with the fact that the recruits that are in the academy now have to graduate and be trained before they can make an impact on any overtime savings.
All right. Bill asks for the floor. Bill?
Well, I was going to point out the investment earnings. I spoke to our new treasurer, and he said they'll be described up, up in the way. And our treasurer is an audience here. I'd like to recognize Paige Cherry, her former colleague.
Yes.
Was going to do that.
You beat him to it.
Once we got past this particular part of the agenda. Thank you, Bill. Yes, sir.
Just a comment to Dr. Patton. Once again, when you say it's based on a needs, who's determining that need? And if it's purely internal, all I'm suggesting is that, I would feel more comfortable as a council person having some more type of objective measure versus just what someone is suggesting who is internally what a need is.
Dr. Morrison is not, Dr. Morris and Associates is not internal.
Yeah, you've mentioned him before, but he's not a staffing modeling person.
He does deal with that also.
But that's not, that's not his area of expertise. That's what I'm saying, that there has not been a staffing modeling done. So I'm just expressing it.
Okay.
Wait. I understand. I do have a question. On your, which of those numbers are positive and which are negative?
Yeah, I was noticing that.
Which, and for what? Is it the end of the quarter?
This is the end, this is the second quarter, so it says December 31st, okay?
Which are positive?
And the investment earnings is positive. My apologies, we should have a bracket around the VDOT maintenance revenue. That is a unfavorable variance. And then the ambulance billing is also unfavorable.
And you project year-end for the two negative variances? Do you have a projection yet?
The $152,000 will be, well, actually, both of them are from our best projection that we think will end the year with, in that case. Is is, the overtime for fire, that's a range that we are projecting, will be needed between now and the end of the year, but that should encompass those final results.
The other figure that would be good when you're comparing is the trend percentage as compared to year-over-year.
Sure. We can add that.
And that would be useful, I think, if it's agreeable with council, that when you give us that information, a five-year trend would be very useful, see how we're comparing.
We can certainly incorporate that because we do have that data, and we'd be glad to share it.
Any other questions? And we do have our new trooper. Paige Cherry.
Yes, I have my chief deputy, George Garner. She's been with the treasurer's office, she was in treasurer's office with Charles Waters, which was treasurer.
She was 12.
And I told Charles, "My dear friend and mentor," so he would want her to stay and take care of me. And have our fiscal officer, Bruce Delanday, who you all know, who said on several boards and commissioners in the city of Portland, he has his lovely wife, Winn, for the one tonight. And I just want to say that, as you were talking about the investment, I can assure you that you saw a $298,000 number, first 90 days, we're going to make you at least $350,000. And if you take that trend and multiply it out for the year, you can see what, you can figure it out what you'll be. So you'll have some more money to do some things that you want to do.
Thank you.
Dr. Bracy's smiling because he said.
Just shut up, Dr. Bracy. What did he say?
Bracy got plans.
Bracy!
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, and you're always welcome to come, please. Any further questions? All right, Dr. Patton.
Yes. Oh, excuse me, what'd you say, Mayor?
No, I was asking questions.
Okay, which one do I ask? Okay. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of council, during the City Council Retreat on February 2nd, a review and recap of the accomplishments of the City Council's Four Big Things of 2017 were presented and celebrated. Tonight, so that our citizens can see a capsule of that presentation, I am going back through the presentation, and in addition, I will highlight the Four Big Things as the outcomes of the 2018 Retreat. As you are aware, that the vision and design of what council wanted to do in 2017 actually started with little post-it notes of ideas and visions from the group. From there, we created Four Big Things. The first, create the City Council Task Force on Poverty. The accomplishments to date as it pertains to the Poverty Task Force. We started with the Crime Reversal Task Force and completed that research and presented to City Council on March of 2017 by representatives from Old Dominion University. We've now combined the data from that task force with data in the hands of the consultants that are going to lead us through the process of developing the Poverty Task Force, which is TP, Miller &amp; Associates, which has been awarded the consulting contract out of Indianapolis, Indiana. And we're looking forward to the consultants coming to Portsmouth within the next couple of weeks so that we can further have our timeline and move this project forward. The second big thing was revise and repeal the Form-Based Code. And in fact, you kind of see a small bomb down there, an explosion, because you want it to blow up the Form-Based Code. With that said, a resolution was adopted in February 2017 initiating a review and a repeal of the zoning ordinance. Current zoning ordinance was adopted in three sections. The D1 Downtown and D2 Form-Based Code zoning districts. The planning staff has moved forward with the rewrite of the city's zoning ordinance, and the D2 transition patch was put in place in May of 2017, where council amended the D2 Form-Based Code with provisions allowing the use permit applications for any activity that did not meet current standards. Further accomplishments, planning has moved forward to very important facets of the zoning ordinance, which will be incorporated in the rewrite to include the parking ordinance. The parking section of the zoning ordinance was rewritten, and the main objectives include combining all parking-related ordinances in one location, increased flexibility in parking decisions, other variances are expressly not allowed, that are not currently allowed, and to ensure Portsmouth requirements are similar to other Hampton Roads municipalities, and streamline and simplify the requirements. We're all aware of the sign ordinance, and the sign section of the zoning ordinance was rewritten. The main objectives of the rewrite include compliance with the Supreme Court's decision on Reed versus the Town of Gilbert, Arizona, which addresses First Amendment issues, and have reminded just recent, as it pertains to sign and what may be on a sign, it's covered under the ordinance which the Supreme Court determined through Reed and Town of Gilbert. And we also address signs that were not previously addressed in the ordinance. The next big thing was be laser-focused on education. And under that, we are working. And under that, we are working and the school systems working on fully accreditation of the schools, which there were great strides made in this past school year. And then to focus on attendance, enrollment, truancy, performance, and parental involvement, and have true partnership with schools, parents, and businesses. I list here just some of the accomplishments, which I'm not going to read through because you are aware of Portsmouth, the city share in Portsmouth operating budget and in the CIP. All of the projects that you see that are listed, starting with Woodrow Wilson's roofs, the city is working under the direction of Mr. James Wright, working very closely with the schools. Dr. Braceey gets an update every two weeks on the status of these projects that are moving forward. Also, under this, the Old Dominion University School of Sociology and Criminal Justice, they completed the survey data through the crime and reversal initiative, and they're continuing to work on the project of creating a legacy, exploring and understanding educational challenges amongst Portsmouth high schools. We focused on the accomplishments in music and enrichment and cultural awareness where all of these programs that are listed here, programs that are supported in one way or another through funding for these programs through education. And lastly, citywide collaboration, we're working with Tidewater Community College, First College, Norfolk State University in their Nano Days partnership, STEM Studio authorities, and all of these areas, the Planetarium, Beasley Foundation, we have a full-time, which we inherited from the schools, that is actually working at the children's museum and aligning the SOL programs for students who are coming there for visits to the museum. In addition, the city schools Renaissance Hotel Hospitality Program is growing in participativeness from students across the three high schools. Number four was image, and you wanted us to tell the Portsmouth story, create a Portsmouth events identity, and be the catalyst to organize, coordinate activities, and maximize Portsmouth's assets. And we, in this frame, shared the different ways in which the city has advertised, engaged through different aspects of social media, the number of impressions which have been received from not only Facebook, but Twitter, Nextdoor, and YouTube. One of the highest rating, ratings that we receive with viewership are our city council meetings and our public work session meetings. So, the public, every week and multiple times during the week, are actually engaged in the accomplishments and the business of the city. And again, this next frame gives impressions and ways in which we are working to continue to improve the image of our city. And down on my four right, as we all know, and still celebrate, the 250th anniversary of the Norfolk Naval Shipyard. That is truly a year, a full year celebration. We are all aware of, by the numbers, looking at the revenue that was generated during the 2017 season, and you received every month a report, actually, the financials from that during the course of the year, which we're looking for a big season to begin in late April, and we know that May, we've already have the Alabama concert schedule. Through the Elizabeth River Compact, which we are shared with you and looking to propose corporate agreement between the cities of Norfolk and Portsmouth to enhance image and marketability as it relates to tourism, economic development, events, and transportation initiatives throughout Hampton Roads, and we're hoping to have that compact completed and before you, before, by the mid to end of May. It is clear, mayor and members of council, over the course of your 2017 four big things, you worked hard and you dreamed big. In all of these areas, some of them are carried over into your 2018 for the city to continue to engage and work toward. I move back to city council's four big things, 2018 retreat, education, image, become a smart city, and the Crawford Gateway revitalization are the broad big items in your four big things. You reaffirmed your vision principles, Portsmouth, Virginia, a city which celebrates its history while embracing its future, a prosperous port city which builds on its assets, its strategic geographic location, its waterways, its rich diversity, its sense of place to create economic opportunity for all of its citizens, a lifelong learning city which fosters education in its broadest sense, a safe, friendly city which values, respects, and protects all of its citizens, visitors, neighbors, and businesses. This vision principle has been reaffirmed. Your guiding principles also were reaffirmed, a compact for leadership, focus on respect, full communication, zero tolerance for disrespect, disagree without being disagreeable, lead by example, view media as a partner, not an adversary, no surprises, share information, be prepared to lead and to govern. These were adopted on February 14, 2017, and reaffirmed at our retreat on February 2nd and 3rd. Since the retreat is over, all of the department heads have been advised that these have been reaffirmed, they are hanging in all of the workplaces across the city. In addition, in addition, the letters have gone out to all of the commissions and boards with copies of the vision principles and the guiding principles. Are there any questions? As a result, the final report and details that entails actually your ideas as it relates to the 2018 big four things will be coming forward in a final report from our facilitators, and I hope to have that by the end of next week, which I will distribute to each of you, and we will also have it on our website.
Under the poverty task force, what was the contract price for TP Miller?
For this company, I think $75,000, either 74 or 75, I'll confirm that and let you know.
And how, how will their role differ from ODU and Norfolk State?
Well, there are pieces of which Norfolk State and ODU are working on. For example, Norfolk State's focus is more workforce development, and you know, we narrowed it down from six broad areas to four, to three areas. And Old Dominion will continue their research and working as it pertains to education and schools and its impact as it pertains to those areas of improving attendance, the truancy issues in those areas.
So, so, ODU isn't looking at the crime issue?
They're going to continue, they're still working that, too. Yeah, they are. And although they've reported to you all when they came last year, they are still narrowing it down and digging deeper into areas as it relates to crime and neighborhood.
So, what role will TP Miller play?
They are actually, will be the consultant or facilitator that will pull all of the community engagement together, as we have with our Bill One Portsmouth piece. And they will actually create the final report after we go through all of those pieces of engaging the entities that will be engaged in the process further.
Does our schools still participate in their careers through Culinary Arts Program, CCAP?
I'm not certain, Mr. Moody, I can find out and report back.
That'd be interesting because that's, that's a regional group, and I know in the past that Portsmouth students participated and did quite well and got a lot of honors.
Right, I'm not familiar with CCAP, but we will get that back to you, we'll answer it by tomorrow.
All right.
Mayor, that finished with the presentations, I will now review four, four city manager report items that will come before you tonight. The first will be the Burn Jag Program Policing in the 21st Century Youth Projects Year Two. It'll be adoption of an ordinance accepting $18,000 from the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services and appropriating the funds in the FY 2018 Grants Fund for use by the Portsmouth Police Department to fund related activities for the police athletically. The second will be another Jag Program Grant Policing in the 21st Century Recruiting and Hiring Initiatives, and adoption of an ordinance accepting $18,000 from the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services and appropriating said funds to the FY 2018 Grants Fund for use by the Portsmouth Police Department to fund recruiting activities. The third city manager's report item came before you two weeks ago. However, it was the formally changing the name of Voting Precinct 14 of the state, wanted us to actually name the precinct and not use the number, so it's adoption of an ordinance, formally changing the name of Voting Precinct 14 to Brighton Elementary School. And lastly, increased minimum lot size requirements for new plating of residential lots, and it will be the adoption of a resolution directing city staff to prepare a proposed amendment similar to the patch to the zoning ordinance to increase the minimal size requirements for new residential lots for the purpose of ensuring that the lots are compatible with the surrounding neighborhoods.
Yes, sir.
As we get further into the budget planning, I want to make sure that we remember the retiree, retired firefighters and the widowers, widowers, as we plan the budget. I know I did a handout a couple of weeks ago, the request in really a paltry $17 a week increase. And as everyone knows, we, we did away with the COLA a few years back, so especially those that retired in the 70s, early 80s. And I think it's important, too, to recall that the equipment that they had back in those eras made them accessible to cancer. In fact, I think the cancer rate among them is eight, anywhere from eight to 10% higher than the populace as a whole. So, as we get into that, I'm going to support that, and hopefully, as we digest the budget, we'll find a place to do the right thing by those employees in that closed system.
Mayor Vice Mayor, members of city council, yes, that was brought to us about two meetings ago. We're working with our actuary, and we're also working with our retirement and John Hancock, so we'll be coming back with a report on that matter.
Great. All right. We're now down to city council liaison reports, and I'll start with Vice Mayor.
My only report is actually from today, and to mention that Mayor Rowe and I and our economic development director, Moore, attended the Virginia Maritime Association membership briefing, which was about economic development and court opportunities, strategies for growth. And it was attended by over 100 people at 7:30 in the morning to listen to the director of the Virginia Economic Development Partnership, John Reinhardt, the CEO of Virginia Port Authority, and Joe Dunlap, who's the managing director of CBRE for Supply and Chain Management. And the upshot for me that was very interesting, considering what we heard from Mr. Moore last night, was the two things that they really honed in on was workforce development, being a smart city. And I think Mayor Rowe and I, we all kind of appalled each other like we're on the right track. These are the, the national consultants who have just completely reiterated and given a checkmark to what Mr. Moore told us last night. It was good.
Keep it in that direction, Nate.
I don't have any reports tonight, but the Hampton Roads Regional Jail Authority meets next week on the 21st, and the Park Authority meets on the 22nd, so I will have reports after those meetings.
All right. Bill?
Well, the personnel committee met since we last met as a council, and we'll discuss that later.
Yes, sir.
Our agenda.
Yes, and I did meet with, well, Portsmouth redevelopment housing authority retreat on Saturday, I gave you some insight on that information last night. They talked about their housing stock, of course, this property inventory list that we have, which they want to define which properties PRHA prefer to keep, which ones they prefer for the city to take a look at, which ones the Economic Development Authority could help to market or develop, and then others that are not of any good use, they want to consider auctioning off. And we're going to be meeting with them on March the 14th is the date that we reset for our retreat with them. They're talking about with Lexington Place, which is the Lincoln Park Phase One, they're requesting $800,000 for that property redevelopment in this, from the CIP fund, and that's supposed to last for 2021. So, I guess they'll be asking for 800,000 each year until those phases are done. One other thing they talked about was the security of their properties, they're using their own resources to police some of the properties. They find that a lot of their crime is not from residents that live in the properties, but from people who are invited in by the residents. So, the funds that they have, they're being depleted, so they're working through some issues to consider how they continue to do those things. And then we'll be meeting on Thursday, this Thursday, so we'll have more updates after that.
The Regional Planning District meets Thursday along with the Metropolitan Planning Organization, and we have the agenda, like I've been doing in the past, I will forward that to you tomorrow. With that, we also got an email today from, I think, Deborah, about the venue for the 26th.
Yes.
Would you announce that, please?
Yes, sir. The joint meeting with the school board will take place at Churchland Middle School. It will be a meeting plus tour of the middle school and also Churchland Elementary.
Churchland Middle School.
Is the location.
On February the 26th.
Yes, sir, at 6:00 PM.
At 6:00 PM. Did you want to add to that, Dr. Patton?
No, mayor, I didn't want, I wanted to comment on something that councilwoman Lucas Burke said, we have not received a request from PRHA for our CIP, and we are far in our CIP process. So, I think I will receive Mr. Glenn tomorrow, and I will call it to his attention.
All right. We do have a need for a closed session, actually, two. We'll take the personnel one first.
So, we'll go out for that one.
You have, or me?
We will leave for that one and come back.
Why can't you stay? Let's have the motion.
For the boards and commissions?
Yes, sir.
I move to go into a closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code subsection 2.2-3711A1 for the purpose of discussing and considering prospective candidates and appointees to boards and commissions.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to go into closed session to discuss what's been stated in the motion. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Ms. Sumus?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.